Call our meeting to order for the January 8, 2013, meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission. If anyone has any cellphones, if you'd take a second and just silence those for us, we would greatly appreciate it. Our chairman, Dusty Lane, is under the weather tonight, so I'm sure he's at home watching. He would never miss an episode, so... But we've got a couple of things, a couple of quick points. If, on our second item that we're going to hear tonight, the land use actions for discussion and possible action, is Daniel Bullock and Jenny Ladd's specific use permit requesting review and approval for the allow pet care and animal keeping. We are actually going to postpone that. They've asked, staff's asked to postpone that until our next Planning Commission meeting, which will be Tuesday, January 15. So just wanted to let you know, if you're here on behalf of that, you're sure welcome to stay. It's going to be interesting, but if not, we will not be hearing that until next Tuesday. So... All right, our first action to this evening for discussion and possible action will be the Oklahoma Alumni Association of Alpha Gamma Row Incorporated Zerbi Interest MAP Amendment PZ .12 .1712, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed at 224 South Washington and 223 South Jefferson from RMU Residential Multifamily Urban to CB Commercial Business District to allow a new fraternity house to be constructed. Tom?
All right, just barely got that up in all the commotion before the meeting. I've forgotten to get my presentations ready, but we're here. Tom Coots, Planning Assistant Development Services. As we said, this is a request to rezone property from the CB Commercial Business District, no, from the RMU Residential Multifamily Urban District to the CB Commercial Business District. This property is located at kind of, it's a half a block, basically. It's at, fronts on Washington Street, Third Avenue, and Jefferson Street. It is surrounded by, on the northwest and half of the south side, by RMU Residential Multifamily Urban District, and to the east and half of the south by the CB Commercial Business District. This is an air photo of the property. You can see that the property currently consists of a fraternity organization's Greek housing, and the parking lot is surrounded by, to the north and the west, by more fraternity, sorority, Greek housing, and to the south and east by, it's mostly commercial, there is, there are a few houses to the south. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the property. Basically, they would like, it'd be another Greek housing fraternity. The CB zoning would allow reduced setbacks and increased lot coverage requirements, which would help in their redevelopment plans. The use, proposed use is a by right use in the CB District, Commercial Business District. Staff findings include the proposed CB Commercial Business zoning is consistent with comprehensive plans. Most properties fronting on Washington Street along the strip are zoned CB Commercial Business, and the proposed zoning would allow for the redevelopment of the property. Do you have any questions for me? I believe the applicant is here with, they might be able to answer specific questions about what may be what they're planning.
Okay. Any questions for Tom?
No questions.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
True.
At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing portion and invite anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposal to step forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Ralph Kinder, I represent SMC Consulting Engineers, we're the site development engineers for the project. With me is Steve Bothell from Bacchus Payne, he's the architect. He can address any specific questions you might have about the actual facility or structure that they plan to build or that he's designing, and I can address any site development questions that you might have. But we've got, we reviewed the staff's comments on the application for the rezoning, and we feel comfortable that the proposed structure that's being designed can address, we can address all of those staff's comments with no, no issues or no concerns.
Excellent. Any questions for Ralph?
Got a silly question, Ralph. I was thinking earlier about it, but when you drive from Jefferson, do you happen to know, just off the top of your head, what the topo drop-off or how many feet higher Jefferson is?
I don't think I, I don't think I have that specifically.
Yeah, I know, I wouldn't expect to know that off your head, but I just noticed that it's pretty big incline there, and I was just curious what that is.
I, I don't know exactly how much that is, but I can find out. Next time, next time I see y'all, no.
Well, I didn't know, I just envisioned a one-story, two-story, three-story, I mean, there's quite a grade there, and I didn't know there may be planning a lot of site work, but I would assume drainage a big part of that.
It is.
Issue on that whole area down there, and I know that Washington area, we've had other issues that revolve around that issue a great deal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing none, we'll close that and ask Tom to come back up with his alternatives.
We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented, or we can find that the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the City Council deny the MAP amendment.
Right. Any discussion or motion?
I move we accept staff findings and recommend the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
Second.
All right, that passes this evening with five yes and two abstentions. Moving on to our second item, we, we do need to get a vote to postpone this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to our second item this evening, Daniel Bullock and Jenny Ladd's specific use permit PZ .12 .1713, requesting review and approval to allow pet care, animal keeping, and veterinary services at property addressed at 116 West 10th Avenue in the CB bid number one, Commercial Business Improvement District, number one overlay. At that time, we're going to go ahead and postpone this. Can I get a motion postponed for next week?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Phil moved.
Need Jeopardy music.
We do. Hand or a little bit user-friendly software.
You're doing great.
Your lights should be flashing.
That also passes and will be heard next Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to plans, policies, ordinances, and discussion for possible action, some text amendments to Chapter 23 Land Development Code with the following amendments. This time, Tom, would you come up and give your presentation?
Tom Coots, Planning Assistant Development Services. This involves changes to multiple sections of Chapter 23 of the Land Development Code. We're going to do this, what, basically what I'll do is I'll go through my presentation. I'll have a slide for each section of the code. We'll have some discussion questions, and we have approximately, we have many sections to go through. When we get to the end, I think that would probably be the appropriate time to have the public hearing, so that's when we'd open it up for any questions from the audience and maybe have any general discussions and any final questions. And then when we get through with that, we would, we'll have to actually vote on each of these items individually and with any changes or whatnot. Did want to point out, we do have a agenda here. My PowerPoint presentation is not in the same order as the agenda, not in the same order as the text that I have before you, so it's not terribly out of order from that, but things are grouped together in same topic categories for ease of the presentation, but I just wanted to let you know so you don't get, wonder why we're out of order. And then also wanted, wanted to just go ahead and point out off, right off the top, one of the items that was advertised for and was on the agenda, it's on number one, it's second half of the number one, Article Two, Division Three permitting. At this time, we're not moving forward with that, so we don't have any text on it, and we're, we'll come back with that at another time. And I just wanted to, as a general comment about this whole thing, this, this, we have many text amendments at this time. It's, it's a part of a larger discussion that we're having, and we'll be coming back to you probably several more times with, with other changes to the Land Development Code. This is the first one in a while, first big group in a while, and that's it. So let's get started. The way, the way I'm generally doing this PowerPoint presentation, you notice on the first slide here, we've got the section in white, the white lettering, it would be the text that's already exists. The yellow underlined would be the text that's proposed, and the red is the text that's proposed to be removed from the code, and that basically follows what is in the text that you have before you. So the first section we're going to talk about is in Section 23-7, Definitions, and that's the definition for Dwelling Unit. The way, it'll just, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to read the way we're proposing it to be, and we'll talk about what we're proposing, and so the new definition for Dwelling Unit will be, is proposed to be, Dwelling Unit means one or more rooms in a residential building or residential portion of a building forming a single habitable unit with provisions for cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities provided with, no, cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities for the exclusive use of a single family maintaining a household. And this section is basically to clarify the intent of our regulations. It is more in line with what other jurisdictions, how they define Dwelling Unit, and just to be clear, it does not allow for accessory apartments. A lot of, when we're talking about Dwelling Units, that's the first thing people think of. Those still aren't allowed, and they won't be allowed with this change in the development and the definition. So with that, do you have any questions for me about definition of Dwelling Unit?
Nope.
Okay. Move on to Section 2358 of the code. It's the zoning MAP Amendment section, proposing a change to line four. Basically, what this would do is allow for the Payne County Assessor to be one of the people who could produce a certified list for the property owners that we send out the notices to for a MAP Amendment. The, the assessor does not currently certify the lists, it just, this would allow for that to be an option at some point, should the assessor choose to certify the lists. Currently, most researchers who put together the list for us, the licensed abstracters, attorneys, engineers, or architects, they, most of them get this information from the assessor and maybe do a little bit of additional research, and so this would just, we'd be getting it from the source if we made this change. And this, this exact change is all being added to the next few slides that we're going to be talking about. Too many questions about adding the County Assessor as a person who can produce the ownership lists?
No.
Okay. Section 23-60, closings. This also has in, in number six down at the bottom, that provision for the Payne County Assessor. Also, we're seeking to add in number two, that they type written a copy of the legal description of a property when you're applying for a closing, that it, just making it clarified that the description that we're seeking is the legal description of the property that's seeking to be closed, to make that nice and clear. And then number four, seeking to have some specific requirements for a site plan that would be turned in with a closing. Basically, the site plan would be turned in, drawn to an approximate scale, and containing the following, the dimensions of the subject property to be closed, that would be the, say it's a right-of-way, the location and dimensions of all buildings, easements, utilities, rights-of-way, driveways, parking areas, property lines, and fences on or within 50 feet of the subject property to be closed, and the location, dimensions of any proposed easements or relocated and/or removed utilities, sidewalks, or streets, once again in relation to a closing. And a closing is, say, the right-of-way of a street, say, let's pick Sixth Avenue, it's 100 feet wide right now. If somebody wanted to utilize a portion of Sixth Avenue for their own private purposes, you would close it, for, close the public use of that road, and then you could vacate it at district court to actually gain title of that area, or you could, this closings apply to easements that are running through properties, like utility easements and whatnot. So do you have any questions about this slide?
No.
I don't have any questions. I might need to start going faster. All right. This slide actually is really quick. It's, once again, it's Section 23-65, variances, is also just adding the Payne County Assessor as a person who can prepare the lists. Any questions about that?
No.
Tom, I got a question. When you did the original deal, I noticed right below that, there were a few other things in that 23-7 definitions that were also.
Yeah, we'll get to that as it comes out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, well, they're in the same group, we, I didn't want to mess up our vote, assuming we ever get the chance to.
Yeah, you're going to vote in order when we get done, and, and the, all the definitions, there's two more coming up.
Excuse me.
Oh, okay. Section 23307, planned unit developments, also just adding the Payne County Assessor as a person who can prepare those lists, and it also gets, makes that requirement more in line with the, the previous sections that we talked about. Any questions about that? Section 23-83, I want to read this, a utility easement containing a single utility shall be not less than 15 feet wide, we're proposing except that an electric utility easement may be permitted to a minimum of 10 feet, as allowed in the SEU, which is Stillwater Electric Utility Terms and Conditions, and then the rest of that provision is proposed to remain the same. Basically, what this is, is it would allow with approval of Stillwater Electric Utility, the ability to have a reduced width easement for electric utilities, instead of requiring them to only be, requiring them to be 15 feet wide, as we were doing. It turns out the SEU had something in their codes already that allowed it to be less, but our Chapter 23 was in conflict with that. Do you have any questions about that?
No questions.
Okay. Now we've got a definition. Section 23-7, Definitions, we're proposing to add a definition of flag lot, and this and some, the following slides are all kind of deal with the ability to have flag lots, and a flag lot is being defined as a lot in the approximate configuration of a flagpole or signpost with a pole or post which does not meet the minimum street frontage requirements, functioning primarily as an accessway to the main body or flag of the lot from the street or access. All lot size, bulk standards, and lot coverage requirements apply only to the flag portion of the lot. So many questions about this definition?
I just have, I guess I'm reading this, and I'm, I'm wondering, are there going to be more specific definitions about, when you say flag lot and it says approximate configuration, are there going to be stipulations about, you know, I'm thinking of, if I'm thinking of it as a flag, how long the pole has to be to be considered a flag lot, or?
Basically, okay.
Can you have something with just a little bitty nub out at the bottom and call it a flag lot, or, I just am curious if there's going to be other specific things that say this is what a flag lot is, and that the flagpole part of it has to be so many feet long to be considered a flag lot, or that?
Yeah. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the requirements of lots here in a second, but basically to answer your question is no, we're not going to, not at this time, get into more, much more specific details to the exact configuration and shape of the lot, but basically a flag lot would be any lot which doesn't meet the minimum lot frontage requirement. The minimum lot, and we're going to come to that here in a second, but basically what we're going to see in the future slide is along the street, you've got to have 50 feet of frontage, and so if the lot has less than 50 feet, and down, you've got to have at least a minimum of 35, then basically that's a flag lot. So however long they, how they choose to make the lot be shaped, that's fine, but basically if you're going to have an area that's less than that amount, you can have that. It just allows for a multitude of, of different shapes of lots to fit more in if we need to.
Is this a flag lot?
If, if it has a, if where it connects to the road is less than the required width, no matter how distance, how much of a distance that is, it would be a, a flag lot.
I don't know what.
It might become more clear as we get through the rest of the slides, maybe. That's, and the next definition, 23-37, Definitions, definition for a front building line means the front setback line or a point at which the lot reaches the required lot width in the case of a flag lot. And let's, let's go ahead and get through the flag lot definitions, and maybe we can talk about questions about the minute, because it all, it's all one package. Section 23-85, lots. Okay. Just wanted to start with line A in your text, based on a comment we received. We took back out, adding the word setback line in line A, so we're proposing that it basically remain the same, it's based on a comment that we received. And then, so line B, and then there's also that same issue in line B at some point. But line B would be residential lot shall abut a public or private street a distance of not less than 35 feet along the property line, except that, and then the rest, except that a corner lot shall be not less than 60 feet in width at the front building line. And then proposing to take out line C, because if you can already go down to 35 feet, we didn't really need to have that in there. And then the second page of that is, is H, but actually, we can probably talk about this one first. Basically, at the front building line, a lot has to be 50 feet, so if you go less than 50 feet, you can go down to 35 feet, but if you do, then that would be defined as a flag lot, and you just have to meet the requirements for having a flag lot at that point. But most lots will just be, are 50 feet wide, the entire width from the street frontage all the way back to the front building line, which is the setback line in most cases, and... So with that, do you have any questions about flag lots?
Okay. Reason why I asked that question and the way that I ask it is I got to thinking about, you know, all kinds of density issues and all of those types of things that might come up with the way that a, what did you call the main body of the lot?
That'd be the flag.
Yeah.
And once again, the, all the lot width, the bulk, the setbacks, the lot coverage requirements, that applies to the flag portion. So any, the area that's less than 50 feet, once you get to the 50 feet, and you have to at some point, then that is what we consider to be when we go and figure out all those things. The flag is just what you've got to have to gain your access, and so really, it wouldn't, it, I mean, because the flag doesn't count, it actually would reduce the density in areas, but it would allow for potentially more lots to be developed, just because you can be a little bit more efficient.
You mean the pole doesn't?
The pole, yes, sorry.
You said flag, but he meant pole.
Yes.
I just thought.
He was checking you.
I was just thinking about where that could impact things in other areas and make them some of the things that we have to ponder a little more complex.
But really, a flag lot, most of the time, it's going to be used in the area where you're laying out regular lots, and you just got a little bit of area left over you can't quite fit a regular lot in, but you can fit, say, one back behind, so you'd have the pole that we can get back to the, the flag back behind, so.
So is that, is that where, you know, I, yeah, I'm trying to visualize a plat of flag lots, but you're saying that most of these, and when they're used, it's in a specific space where you just would have maybe like one or two to fill in.
Probably.
In certain instances, and not necessarily a 50-lot subdivision that's all flag lots.
Yeah, most likely. Now, there's nothing that would restrict a person from.
Right.
Trying to do that. Just is.
So there's, and the pole can be a mile. I mean, it can be as long as it needs to be.
It could be, yeah. I remember, remember, the pole's 35 feet wide, so.
Right.
35 feet times a mile's a lot of wasted space.
I, I get that, but I'm just trying to wrap my mind around.
Yeah.
Because he drew a picture, and that made me think of.
Yeah.
The pole could be quite long.
They got to build some sort of street or something, and it's got to be a fire, and all sorts of things, so.
Yeah.
A mile, maybe.
Yeah. Meeting the fire code.
I know, that was an exaggeration, but.
Yeah.
But it could be 200, 300 feet, easy.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the, the rest of Section 23-85, lots, basically, in, in item H, we added and clarified what is considered to be a lot when it comes to development. So I'll just read it. A lot is a single lot of record, or a portion of a lot of record, or a combination of complete lots of record, of complete lots of record, and portions of lots of record, or portions of lots of record under single, under single ownership as described by a recorded deed or a CUBR certificate, and that's really the important one, is we have a process for commercial projects. CUBR stands for Commercial Use By Right, and a CUBR certificate basically describes the land that is being used for a commercial project, and it thus allows for us to define what is the lot for a commercial development in that way. And so do you have any questions? And I just wanted to go ahead and add also that there will be more information on the CBR certificate, what the makeup of it is, when it's required, this and that. That'll be coming at a, in a different set of text amendments, but this, this right here just allows it, the process to exist. So any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Section 23-100, just temporary structures. Actually, let me get my, just a second while I catch up. Okay. The full name is Temporary Accessory Structures and Uses Within All Districts Other Than Residential, so commercial districts. And line number two, contractors' office and equipment sheds accessory to a construction project are allowed, provided that the, the rest of the circumstances remain the same, but we're adding the provision that would allow for a, one of these to be approved with an earth change permit, if, if it's been issued for a project, an earth change permit, earth change grading and stormwater permit is basically a grading permit, most of the time, has been issued for a project. If there's no earth change permit, it allows for a, spells out what process that would be. Some projects don't require one of these permits, and basically, just to clarify, it allows for, right now, a contractor shed or store, contractor's office or whatnot, would not be allowed to be on a property until after a building permit has been issued for a project, and so this allows for it to be issued with an earth change permit. So it'd be like when they decide to bring out the bulldozers and start moving the ground and shaping it, so it speeds up when they could bring up, out one of these offices. So do you have any questions about that?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Section 23-136, the RSL District. In this district, and in the next couple of slides, you're going to see what's proposed. Basically, that a 10-foot, 10-foot setback be allowed for any property lines that are abutting in alley. Right now, an alley is, it's considered to be a right-of, you see number one, normally offices. So any questions about that?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Section twenty-three dash one thirty-six, the RSL district. Um, in this district and in the next couple of slides, you're going to see what's proposed. It basically, um, that a ten foot, ten-foot setback be allowed for any property lines that are abutting an alley. Uh, right now, an alley is, it's considered to be a right, you see number one, normally it would be required to be twenty feet from all property boundaries abutting a right-of-way. An alley is considered to be a right-of-way. So ordinarily, in any dis, in any district, um, the front setback would apply to an alley, even if, say, the alley is, you know, behind your house in your backyard, you'd still have to have the twenty-foot front setback. And, uh, so it's just specifying that it can be ten feet if you're next to an alley. Any questions about that?
No questions.
The RSS district, um, are proposing that same alley provision, but also proposing that the unit slash condominium ownership be, um, taken out of the permitted uses. It is permitted in a different area of our code and by state statute, one can always do condominium ownership, but we just, we don't need to specify that as permitted use. It makes, it does cause some confusion. And then, uh, number three at the bottom, removing the requirement for maximum lot coverage of forty percent in the RSS district. Um, that would allow for a, within the setbacks of a lot, it would allow for larger buildings to be constructed on a platted lot or any lot than is currently allowed. You have any questions about either of those provisions?
Nope.
Okay. The RT, residential two-family districts. The, second, let me catch up again. All right. Once again, it's pretty much the same as the, we just saw the proposing the, the condominium ownership come out and the alley setbacks. Any questions about that real quick? Section twenty-three, one thirty-nine, the RTM, which is residential two-family and multifamily district, also proposing the, uh, ten-feet alley setback. Section twenty-three dash one forty, the RMI, residential multifamily intermediate district, the alley setback again. Section twenty-three dash one forty-one, the residential multifamily urban district, the alley setback again. Section twenty-three dash one fifty, the office district, the alley setback again. Section twenty-three dash one fifty-one also has the provision for the alley, uh, we're also, uh, proposing to add as a specific use permit, specific use in that district, uh, telecommunications towers. Um, let me get to my notes real quick. The, uh, cell towers or telecommunications towers are allowed, uh, in the commercial general district with a specific use permit. So I thought that in the other commercial district, that would be appropriate. And remember, with a specific use permit, that's something that goes to hearing and, uh, it's decided whether or not that's an appropriate use for the property at that time. So any questions about either of those? Okay. Section twenty-three dash one fifty-three, the commercial general district, the alley setback again. Section twenty-three dash one sixty, the IL industrial light district. Staff's proposing that telecommunications be allowed as a, as a by right use in the light industrial district. Uh, telecommunications, cell towers are allowed as a by right use in the industrial general district. Seem that these are, districts are similar enough to allow cell towers. Any questions about that? Okay. Section twenty-three dash three sixty. Uh, first of all, you'll notice on the screen, uh, the text is slightly different than what you have in your text before you, um, just based on a comment we received. Um, thought that was a little ambiguous, so we've reworded it and I'm going to read it to you in, in its entirety. All new alleys shall be designed and paved to city standards. Existing alleys shall be designed and paved in accordance with the city standards when any development which increases the size of the existing principal structure or adds any structure or parking and loading area to the property is proposed which uses the alley for any access. The full width of the alley shall be paved for the length of the development and to the nearest intersecting street or existing paved section of alley. Any existing alleys within the RSS, residential small lots, single family and RSL, residential large lot, single family large lot, districts serving single family uses are exempt from these paving requirements. So basically, what we have here, this provision will clarify basically when a, uh, someone is required to take and pave an existing alley that isn't paved. Um, so any questions about, about that? Okay. Section twenty-three dash one seventy-three in the bid district. Basically, the section pertaining to sidewalk cafes, uh, we've added some provisions, uh, to clarify what the exact process is for approval of a sidewalk cafe. The bid district, as you know, is the downtown area. And it reads, prior to commencing such operations, a scaled site plan showing the location of the building, right-of-way sidewalks, curbs, utility poles, awnings, canopies, and all proposed fencing, seating, and tables, and proof of insurance, shall be submitted to development services for review. A sidewalk cafe permit will be granted upon approval. Any questions about that? This, once again, this, this doesn't add or change the ability to have sidewalk cafes in the bid district. Let's just clarify that what the process is for approval. Okay. Section twenty-three, three forty-nine, the public improvement warranty. There were many changes to this, and basically, this just clarifies the public improvement warranty section of the code. Um, I'm going to read it as we're proposing it to be, but notice there's a lot that's coming out, lots being added. So, prior, prior to the acceptance by the city council of any improvement, a maintenance bond for the full amount of the contract to construct such improvement will be filed with the city clerk. The bond shall be for one year from the acceptance of the improvement slash warranty period, shall name the city of Stillwater as obligee, and shall identify the location of the improvement and the improvement being bonded. The developer shall ensure the correction of any defect in materials or workmanship that are necessary to restore and maintain said improvements to the same standards applicable at the time the cities, of the cities' acceptance of said improvements. So any questions about that? Okay.
I, I'm just, real quick question.
Oh.
This seems like what we used to do, um, ten years ago or whatever, because I remember when I worked for the city, we went to the, uh, public improvement warranty or something like that. So I'm just curious, um, did, you know, what drove the change to come back? Did was.
Probably going to have to ask Paula to come up.
Not disagreeing with that. I just was curious if it was, turned out that the public, or whatever warranty wasn't really valid or didn't really work or.
Yeah. I was going to ask Paula Dennison to come up and explain that. She worked on this particular section.
Sorry for asking that question, but that's just more of a curiosity.
That's okay. Um, Paula Dennison, Development Services. What we have seen is with the amount of, um, developers and property owners from outside Stillwater, the public improvement warranty, just the one form that the developer signed, committing themselves to the one year, um, that was very unique to Stillwater. And it was extremely uncomfortable for especially national developers to come in and obligate themselves when it was actually their contractor who would obligate to them, and then they in turn would have to obligate to the city of Stillwater. So this is, again, you're absolutely correct, going back to the way it was.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Section twenty-three dash two eighty-two, the commercial use by right application. Um, this section, uh, just clarifies that the water and sanitary sewer impact analysis is in fact a requirement. It's a requirement in other sections of, uh, the city code, but it wasn't listed in chapter twenty-three. And, uh, the water and sanitary sewer impact analysis, just so you know, is, um, when a commercial project seeks to be developed in the city, this analysis will demonstrate that the, the water system and the sanitary sewer system can, that the, the city can serve them, that particular use. And, uh, we're going to see this in the next couple of slides also, the couple of sections in the code where we needed to add that in. But do you have any questions about that? Okay. Section twenty-three dash three fifty-seven, water distribution. Once again, just adds, uh, clarifies that the impact analysis must be submitted for, with improvement plans. Section twenty-three dash three fifty-eight, sanitary sewer collection system. Once again, this clarifies that the impact analysis must be submitted with improvement plans. All right. We've made it. So we've gone through all these sections and just want to read our, read our findings. Staff findings include, the text amendments will allow for greater flexibility in the development and clarify certain language in the land development code. The text amendments will allow for the continued development of Stillwater in a planned and proper manner. And the land development code must be periodically reviewed for unclear language and revised accordingly. So with that, do you have any, um, general questions for me? Okay. I'm going to turn it over you, to you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. I know that was a lot of fun going through that, so we appreciate it. At this point, we would like to open the public hearing portion. Anyone that'd like to speak in favor of any of the amendments, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll move on. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll bring Tom back up to give the alternatives and then we will vote on each item individually.
Okay. We can accept staff findings and find that the proposed text amendments are needed and recommend that the city council approve the proposed text amendments as presented, or we can accept staff findings and find that the proposed text amendments are needed and recommend that the city council approve, approve the proposed text amendments as modified.
All right. Well, our first item would be item number one, two-three-point-seven definitions. Anyone like to give a motion?
I would move that we approve. wording is amended.
Second.
That passes with five votes and two abstains. Item number two, two-three-point-five-eight zoning map amendment.
Do we need to take action on Article Two, Division Three permitting, even though it's not, um?
Even though we didn't hear that?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Hasn't been noticed. No action?
No.
Just no action?
No action.
Okay. Sorry. Let me. Cancel.
Twenty-three-point-fifty-eight. Thank you, sir.
I move we accept staff findings on twenty-three-point-five, a zoning map amendment.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item three, two-three-point-six-zero, closing of public ways and easements.
I would move we approve twenty-three dash sixty, closing of public ways and easements as amended by staff.
Second.
Five to two. Two abstentions. Not, item number four, two-three-point-six-five, variances.
I move we accept staff findings for twenty-three-point-six-five variances.
Second.
Mr. Marlowe, can you make your selection again, please, sir? Thank you.
That also passes. Five yes to abstain. Item number five, two-three-point-eight-three, easements and dedications.
I would move that we approve two-three dash eight-three easements and dedications as amended.
Second.
That also passes. Five yes to abstain. Item number six, two-three-point-eight-five, lots.
I move we accept staff recommendations for twenty-three-point-eight-five lots.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. This would be item six B, two-three-point-one-zero-zero, temporary accessory structures and uses within all districts other than residential.
I move that we approve section twenty-three dash one hundred as amended by staff.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number seven, two-three-point-one-three-six, large lot, single-family residential district.
I move we accept staff findings for section twenty-three-point-one-three-six, a large lot, single-family residential.
Second.
Second. Joe's asleep. We lost him.
I wasn't wanting to speak in opposition.
That passes. Five yes to abstain. Item number eight, two-three-point-one-three-seven, small lot, single-family residential district.
I would move that we accept staff amendments to two-three dash one thirty-seven, RSS, small lot, single-family residential district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number nine, two-three-point-one-three-eight, RT two-family residential district.
I move we accept twenty-three staff recommendations for twenty-three-point-one-three-eight, RT two-family residential district.
Second.
Ooh, threw us off. Threw us off.
The curve.
Mr. Mayor Phil, will you make your selection?
Oh, 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 I can't get this together. I'm doing too much reading here.
That passes. Five yes to abstain. Item number ten, two-three-point-one-three-nine, two-family and multifamily district.
I move we accept staff recommendations, twenty-three-point-one-three-nine, two-family and multifamily district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number eleven, two-three-point-one-four-zero, RMI multifamily intermediate district.
I would move we accept section twenty-three dash one forty to stack, uh, staff amendments, RMI multifamily intermediate district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number twelve, two-three-point-one-four-one, RMU multifamily urban district.
I move we accept staff findings for twenty-three-point-one-four-one, RMU multifamily district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item thirteen, two-three-point-one-five-zero, O office district.
I move we accept section twenty-three dash one fifty, office district for the recommendations of amendments by staff.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item fourteen, two-three-point-one-five-one, CS, commercial shopping district.
I move we accept staff recommendations, twenty-three-point-one-five-one, CS, commercials, shopping district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item fifteen, two-three-point-one-five-three, CG, commercial general district.
I move we accept staff amendments to section twenty-three dash one fifty-three, commercial, CG, commercial general district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number sixteen, it's twenty-three-point-one-six-zero, IL light industrial district.
I move we accept staff findings for twenty-three-point-one-six-oh, light industrial district.
Second.
Five yes to abstain. Item number seventeen, just two-three-point-three-zero-seven, application preliminary PUD plan.
I move that we, uh, accept staff findings for section twenty-three dash three-o-seven, application preliminary PUD plan.
Second.
We're getting quicker.
That passes. Five yes to abstain. Item eighteen, two-three-point-three-six-zero, alleys.
I move we accept staff findings for two-three-point-three-six-oh, alleys. I move we accept staff findings for two-three-point-three-six-O, alleys.
Second.
That passes, five yes to abstain. Item nineteen, two-three-point-two-seven-three, development standards for the bid district.
I move to accept staff amendments to section twenty-three dash two-seventy-three, development standard.
Second.
That passes, five yes to abstain. Item number twenty, it's two-three-point-two-eight-two, contents of application site plan.
I move we accept staff findings for twenty-three-point-two-eight-two, contents of application site plan.
Second.
That passes, five yes to abstain. Item twenty-one, just two-three-point-three-four-nine, public improvement warranty.
I move we accept staff amendments to section twenty-three dash three forty-nine, public improvement warranty.
Second.
That passes, five yes to abstain. Item twenty-two, which is two-three-point-three-five-seven, water distribution system.
I move we accept staff findings for twenty-three-point-three-five-seven, water distribution system.
Second.
Try yours to the top. They're up there. He dropped you. Let the record show that Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. McKean did vote in favor of the item, um, that showed here, but not in both places, and his key was left lit up.
That passes, five yes to abstain. Item number twenty-three, which is two-three-point-three-five-eight, sanitary sewer collection system.
I move that we recommend staff amendments to section twenty-three dash three fifty-eight, sanitary sewer collection system.
Second.
And that passes, five yes to abstain. Thank you, I think we were a part of a record amount of votes on the planning commission tonight. You guys can write that on your resumes, so. Moving on to, um, meeting summary and approval of the regularly scheduled December eighteenth, two thousand and twelve minutes. Anyone get a chance to review those?
I move for approval of the minutes.
My second.
Second. And those pass with five yes and two abstains. Our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, January fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, right here, and I would move for adjournment.
I so move to adjourn.
Second.
Return. Begin next week, guys.